Thank you for coming to the October 10 Avon Town Council Meeting. And if you would please stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Kathy.
Bill Holland.
Here.
Dawn Loudon.
Present.
Greg Zuzen.
Present.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Jason Puckett.
Present.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, Check Register Minutes, D.R. Horton Bond Release, and the Settlement West Bond Release. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Consent Agenda to include the Check Register for today, the Approval of Minutes from our September 26th meeting. The work session, October 1st work session budget, budget work session, excuse me, the D.R. Horton Bond Release and the Settlement West Bond Release as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Dawn Loudon.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four. Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward if you do. Please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open. With nobody coming forward, then we'll close that and move on to Department Head Updates. Linda.
Good evening, Linda Allbrand, Planning Director. Plant Commission will be hearing six cases at the end of this month, two rezonings being Silver Spring and Meyer, the PUD Amendment for wind farms, a continued DPR for the Fire Department, and two plats, one of them minor plat. We had 10 new cases filed last week for the December Plant Commission, so that'll be a hefty one. We are continuing working on UDO updates. Paul has been going page by page through the document. He is up through chapter five out of 10 right now, so working our way through that. And then finally, I attended the Harvest Hayrides this past Saturday in regards to the comp plan, so we could have some additional public comment as a pop-up event. So I listened to residents talk about what they liked and did not like about Avon for the four hours that the event was going on. It was a great event and compliment Parks Department on that. Any questions?
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda. Chief Stoops.
Good evening. In your packet, you should have a couple pictures there of our courtroom that's under renovation now, finally. It's underway. They've progressed pretty quickly since they just started last week. You can see in the pictures there, they've already done most of the demolition. They've got a little bit more demolition to do with a couple of changes to add to the project, but other than that, they're pretty optimistic that they're going to be finished by November, but I think it's probably going to be more towards the end of November because there's a few little speed bumps here and there that I think that are going to pop up. So optimistically, we should be finished with that by Thanksgiving, we hope. Our three ILEA cadets are progressing well with their Indiana law enforcement training, and they're on track to graduate here just in a couple of months, so wish them luck and keep them going strong so we can get them out and get them on the road. We picked up all of our Tahos this week. Only took them almost 10 months to come in, but we finally got them in. So they're all scheduled for all of their equipment to be installed and everything that they have to have. So that'll take a few more weeks to hope to get that finished, and then hopefully we'll have those on the road with our officers here pretty soon. We are starting our next Sergeant Promotion process to fill a Sergeant vacancy that we have within the department. All of those candidates are rated on their merit in multiple categories and for a cumulative score that's presented to our Avon Police Department Merit Commission, and then our Merit Commission will evaluate those scores and for consideration for an appointment to that position. In your packet there, you have the monthly statistics. There wasn't anything as glaring this month as there was that one statistic from last month, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have from the packet.
Questions for Chief Stoops? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all I've got tonight. A couple of my department heads are sick, and as you guys know, Steve is in Florida, and his flight was canceled today, so he wasn't able to get back. So John is not feeling well, and you guys saw Shelby earlier, she also was under the weather, so apologize that they're not here to give updates, but if you guys have any questions about parks or public works, I'm happy to answer the questions or economic development.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Then let's move on to Council Comment and Liaison Report. Jason.
I have nothing new tonight.
Robert.
Ditto. I have nothing tonight.
Dawn.
Attended the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee number two the other night with Greg, Ryan, and Linda and the others, and it's moving right along. We're getting, you know, all the public survey analysis and things have come back in, so from their pop-up event at the park the other day and then their online surveys and things. So they are getting quite a bit of response, and we discussed that. That's it.
Bill.
I don't have anything, but I do have a question about, Dawn, what you just said. Do we know how many public comments we actually had?
I think the online was like 607.
Thank you.
Is that right?
607 online. You had 29 in the focus groups.
16 in person.
16 in person at the open house. And I don't remember how many they talked to.
122 in the pop-up. 122. Let's see, I attended the Men in Action Breakfast on the 3rd of October, the Business Leader Luncheon at the school on the 4th, and as Dawn indicated, the Comp Plan Steering Committee. Let's move on to new business, then. It's a public hearing on annexation. Public hearings have been advertised for both annexations. Upon opening and closing the public hearing, no action by the Town Council is necessary. Town Council must wait 30 days to act on the annexation, so this will be back on our agenda on November 21st for a final reading. The first one is the Carnoustie Annexation. Ryan, did you have anything to say about that?
No, I'll maybe just do a quick introduction. The Carnoustie Annexation, it's labeled Carnoustie Annexation because it was really initiated by the residents who are on Carnoustie Circle. They had approached the town about annexation into town. If you guys recall, you did accept their petitions. They did have a request along with those petitions, which was that the town would take over their streets as part of the annexation. If you guys recall, Steve Moore went out and did an analysis of what it would cost, and it was over $100,000 worth of roadwork. But again, I think we thought in the big picture of the community that this was in our best interest. The Town Council did pass a fiscal plan for this, which is available for review. So as part of the annexation process, you have to open up this public hearing. The general area of the Carnoustie Annexation is at the intersection of 100 South and County Road 525, and so it's kind of on both sides of 100 South and along County Road 525, and the entrance of the parks at Presswick. There's a few houses in that area as well, and then the Presswick Golf Course is also a part of the annexation.
With that being said, we will open up the public hearing at 7:09. If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. With nobody coming forward, then for the Carnoustie Annexation, we will move on to the Area E of County Road 400 East, and Ryan, if you could give a brief recap of that annexation.
Yes, this is another annexation that we've been working on for a couple of years. We had worked with some property owners in that area to try to get them annexed. We've had to do a little bit of a goofy shaped annexation, but based on the amount of petitions we had, we were able to potentially annex this area. The area consists of several homes along Liberty Meadows Court and then two farms that are along County Road 400 East. There is a map available online, or I've got one over here if anyone wants to see it as well.
Let us then at 7:11 open up the Public Hearing on Annexation for Area E of County Road 400 East. Please come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name's Jean Pell Franklin, and the address is 755 South County Road 400E. I just really have two questions. The first is, I just want to make sure that the ag, current property tax ag exemption that we have will continue even after the annexation and even if we sell it to another person who is planning to farm the property. That's my first question. Second question is, if in the future, the town decides to run a water line and/or a sewer line along 400E, and we decide not to hook up to the line because we have a well and a septic system, will it cost us anything?
That's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name's Dave Elmore. I'm here with my wife Diane tonight. We live at 699 South County Road 400 East. Our ag property is right adjacent to the Pell's property, and the only concern I still have, it bothers me a bit, is I want to be assured, as I was when we signed the petition, that that property remains zoned ag agriculture and not go to residential. It's been that way since we've owned the property, and we're grandfathered under that clause with the county. I'd like for that to stay, otherwise I would not be in agreement to it, so.
Thank you. With nobody else coming forward, then we'll close the Public Hearing on the Annexation of Area E of County Road 400 East. Ryan, these are, I think, real easy to answer, so if you could do that, please?
Sure, absolutely. So the Pell's and the Elmoors, if you guys recall, are the two farms as part of this, and the town is able to offer an agricultural abatement as long as they sign a voluntary annexation petition, which they both did. So that annexation abatement, when we actually do it, will run with the property. So as long as you guys as property owners want that ag abatement to be in place, it would stay in place until such time you actually asked for it to be changed. So the town cannot change it on our own. It would have to be at your property owner's request. Even if you sell it to someone else, it would be that property owner then that would have to request the town to remove the ag abatement. The second question, which was a little bit of a different question, was about the zoning. And in the county, both of those parcels are zoned ag, and we have proposed to bring them both in as ag as well. The Liberty Meadows piece is coming in as a proposed R1, which is more consistent with the lots that they have, but the Pell's farm and the Elmoors farm were proposing to bring in as ag. And then I think the third question was about the water line. The town of Avon isn't the water provider, so we would not extend water. Citizens Water would do that. We'd have to check with them, and I could try to get an answer. Typically, they wouldn't force you to connect to water, even if they rain it there. If you wanted to connect to it, you'd have that opportunity, and they would maybe ask for you to pay something in order to connect to it if it was extended, but I don't believe, at least in my experience with citizens, they wouldn't force anybody to do it. Now, I know there've been some discussions about water to there, and I think it's fairly expensive, and I don't, Citizens isn't going to do it unless the property owners petition them to bring it there. So I think it's a very low likelihood that water would actually be extended there, and if it was, it would be paid by the property owners, probably in Liberty Meadows versus you guys, because they'd have to come from 100 South and then turn all the way up to come up 400 to even get to your properties.
So, okay, my question was really, would we have to pay just to run the water line even though we were not planning to connect to it, so?
You would not, no. So Citizens would put in the trunk line, and then you would have the opportunity to decide, do you want to connect a service to the trunk line? And they couldn't make you pay for that unless you actually wanted it. Now, they could, there is Barrett Law that they could force you, but again, in my practical sense, Citizens doesn't typically do that. We haven't seen them do that in Avon. And Dan, if you want to?
But none of this, good question, it's just that whether you are annexed in the town or not doesn't change the outcome of your answers, because the town is not the utility provider. So if Citizens Water wants to run a water line down your road to give you that opportunity, that between you and Citizens, you can hook up or not.
Okay.
Has nothing to do with whether you're in the town or out, staying with sewer, because we don't provide it. West Central provides it there, and so it's just, it's a good question, it's just not one, the town does control those things. You should be clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Bill, did you have any comments?
No, I was just going to make sure that someone said something about the sewer as well, so thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to accept the annexation petitions for the Bloom property. Ryan?
Yeah, as the council is aware, we've been, Linda and I have been working with Lennar on a property that is owned by the Blooms, which is along our western township line, actually just north of the area we just talked about, annexation, but a little bit north of Main Street. And so they have signed petitions to be annexed. They've also filed the rezoning, and so in order to start that process, the Town Council has to accept those petitions, at which point then we will start the annexation process. We've coordinated a timeline with Lennar to line up the zoning with the annexation, so those two things will move together, so you guys will see it. We do have, it's in two petitions because we have to do it in two separate annexations, so there'll be a Phase 1 Bloom Annexation, then there'll be a Phase 2 Bloom Annexation, and so that's why you have two separate petitions. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cannon? Would somebody like to make a motion for the Bloom Annexation Petition Phase 1?
As I say, do we have to make two separate motions then? I'll make a motion that we accept the Bloom Annexation Petition for Phase 1 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dawn Loudon.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
And then we need a motion for the Phase 2 Annexation Petition.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Bloom Annexation Petitions for Phase 2 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dawn Loudon.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Avon Police Department. Jim quotes. Deputy Chief Nugent.
Thank you, sir. You should have a memo in front of you, as well as two quotes that were attached to that memo. It's been several years since we've invested into our exercise equipment at the PD. There's a little bit of confusion about what funds we can use. Obviously, we're not proposing to take all of this out of the general fund, but within your memo, it's spelled out, there's two phases of this. In the first phase, we're looking to expense some of our excess capital as a result of our vacancies, and then the second one, in the memo that you received, I explained to you that there was a fund balance of $115,000 in that Lisi account. Three days after I sent that email to Ryan to put in the packets, Julie notified me that we had received an unexpected deposit of $18,940 into that same account. This is an interesting thing that we deal with. Years ago, when the state of Indiana would require handgun permits for people to carry, they'd charge a $50 fee that we would collect. All of that revenue would come to the Lisi fund. That was also revenue that we could use for training, education, physical fitness, and equipment like this. We had seen, the first round of legislation had failed with the state, but we saw kind of what was coming. We realized it was going to eventually pass, so the town moved to ensure that we were funding our training through the general fund, and we've let this Lisi account kind of sit and just kind of maintain some current deposits that we get from our regular operations. So in all, if we were to approve the proposal today, the expense, including the deposit that was unexpected, would leave our Lisi fund at $105,095.12. So I just wanted to stress the fact we're not really drawing down that fund balance much more than what we actually had proposed in this memo to begin with. So we've been working closely with our vendor on this, a lot of un-pit from the officers. I spoke to one of the supervisors last night, and he said he's talked about 25 of our officers who are really excited about this potentially coming to the basement for them to have a workout area that they can use. We do always open this up as an opportunity for town employees as well, if they want to do that, and so with that being the case, the proposal is pretty straightforward. We're looking to make the entire purchase at one time with invoicing out of two different phases. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Deputy Chief Nugent? Would somebody like to make a motion, then?
Well, I have a question about the motion. One, do we need to authorize Clerk Treasurer to make payment on this in the motion? And second, do we need to specify that these are coming out of separate funds, or just to authorize payment is enough? And just so I'm clear, the quote 17460 is the accurate quote.
That's Phase 1 quote. That is for, that would be actually paid out of our surplus funds from the general fund that's already in our budget, and the other Phase 2 is the 29612, which will come from the Lisi, which will require an additional appropriation from the Lisi account into our operations this year.
I'm trying to know how I can word this all in one, and I think I'm looking at Dan, and I don't know that he's heard any of this. Should I include this as one motion? Should we take these as, okay, should we include this as one? Should we do the total cost of Phase 1 and Option 2 total? I'm seeing a no.
Just making one motion, you're approving it.
Roger that. I will keep it that, I will keep it that simple. I make a motion that we accept the approval, accept the estimate from Pro Power Industries as presented and authorize Clerk Treasurer to make payment.
Second.
Does that work? Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Dawn Loudon.
Four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Marathon Pipeline Encroachment Agreement. Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, you guys will recall about a month ago, you guys actually approved a Marathon Encroachment Agreement for Avon Landing Way, which is the road for the Sephora. On the other side of the project, the town trail that we're requiring Sephora to build crosses the pipeline as well, and so it was more urgent timing, and Marathon isn't incredibly fast at pulling these together, and they want the agreements, they want to draft the agreements and provide them to us. So we got the one out of the way because it was the most important to allow the construction of the road, but then this one's just following behind, so it's essentially the same exact agreement you did, it's just now this is for our multi-purpose path to be able to encroach on their easement, and so it's basically the same thing. It allows us to build the trail on top of their easement, but if they have to tear it out or if they need to do something, they still maintain their rights and everything. So again, if you have any questions specifically about it, Dan can answer those for you.
Mr. Taylor, you've read this agreement, and you're okay with it?
Yes, we were done with Marathon. Actually, they were really good work with on this, and it's time.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Marathon Pipeline Encroachment Agreement as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dawn Loudon.
Four.
Jason Puckett.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Bill Holland.
Four. Next item on the agenda is the Cost Share Agreement Civic Center at Easton Gray. Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, so I know we've talked a lot about the Civic Center at Easton Gray, but this is really, the Redevelopment Commission has approved some contracts and things like that, but I know you guys have seen building plans and kind of those things and design, and we've had lots of joint meetings with the school board, but this is the actual kind of first step in an approval process in terms of the cost share agreement and how we move forward with that building. And so Dr. Wyndham is here, thank you, Dr. Wyndham, for coming, but Dr. Wyndham and I have worked on this for several months. We've had numerous, numerous meetings, discussion. We've had, both of our attorneys have been involved and assisted in drafting this, and I think we've gotten to something that I think is relatively simple, but also is equitable for both parties and is really the beginning of this relationship between the town and the school to work together on this Civic Center. The important thing, I think, that you guys would want to know is how we split it, and it's based on the square footage of the building, so that's the 55% is the town's square footage, and then the 45% is the school corporation's square footage. So we've carried that out, not just into the construction, but then into the maintenance and the upkeep as well. This talks about how we're going to share and use space and who has first priority. It talks about who's responsible for the maintenance, and this is actually set up in a way, the town is the primary, so the town is responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep, and then we would build back the school corporation for anything. It also talks about shared space, so that's one of the unique things about this building is our ability to share some of that space, and so it does talk about how we prioritize it and who owns it and who manages it, and the majority of those things fall on the town. It was originally, the idea was it was a town building, it's a town property. The two things, there's lots of things in the agreement, but I really think the two things that are making it even more clear are the two exhibits that are attached, and hopefully those aren't some, you guys have seen those before, so the exhibits attached, the first one, and you may think it's a little confusing, so the first one is, the school and the town are both doing bonds to be able to pay our share of these projects, and so in order for the school to do a bond and pay for their share, they have to own the property that they're expensing the money. The town has the same issue. We have to own the property where we're performing the work or building a building. And so there is, the agreement says that we will deed a portion of the property to the school corporation, and that will be the piece that the school actually owns, even though there are areas underneath the school's ownership that the town will actually be the primary and the user of those spaces. So the first exhibit, if you don't pay too much attention to it, that's what I would recommend, because it's just going to confuse you. The second exhibit's the one which is the usage space and who actually owns and manages those pieces. The second exhibit is a little more clear, but there's some overlap there, and that's some of the complexity and the confusion of this is, well, there are things the school owns, but the town actually is the main holder of that, and there are things on the town side that the school needs to use. They kind of have to work together, and so I applaud everybody in this process, Dan and John Becker and Dr. Wyndham. I think we took something that was really complex, and I think we actually came up with a relatively simple way that forever, which is really what this agreement is for, it's a 50-year term with a forever, which is really what this agreement is for, it's a 50-year term with another 50 years renewing, continuing on. So the thought is, this building is going to be here forever, and we're establishing a framework that people are going to have to use forever and far beyond Dr. Wyndham and I, and all of you in the school board who have all kind of stepped into this. But again, I think we've kept a very simplistic framework that works for everybody. So, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you guys have, but this was approved by the school board on Monday, so we're hoping that, to get your guys' support and approval today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon or for Mr. Taylor?
I have a question. So, I know that there was extra space as far as land that was left, and it was discussed when we were first talking about this joint venture, that if the school wanted to expand their footprint on the property, or if the town needed to expand their footprint. So what would happen to these percentages then, at that point, if this is a 50-year agreement? Because those percentages would then change.
Well, you know, we didn't talk about that, I guess, because we did it based on what was there now, so that would be something we'd probably just have to renegotiate at some point if the school actually did an expansion to that space.
Yeah, but the percentages are based upon interior space. The town owns everything outside. So if land outside, if it were moved around, or if the building were to be enlarged on, by either party, you'd have to go back to the joint board.
Okay.
In a minute, which is fine, but...
Okay.
Yeah, the maps show you who owns the interior.
Right.
But yeah, maybe it's not clear, but the town would own all the real estates around here.
Okay, thank you.
And then my only question is, we've talked about the township, and we've talked about the chamber also occupying space, but they're going to occupy the town space, so we're in essence, subleasing that space to them? Is that how you look at that?
Exactly, yeah. So the agreement asks the school to acknowledge that that's what we're going to do.
Not subleasing.
Not subleasing, leasing.
Leasing, okay.
It would be the part you own, so you would lease it. And it does, the agreement does articulate that that, we want to make sure the school knew that might happen, it might not, but that we were calculating it. And so, it says in, right on Page 1, I think, that we made, we made lease and share some space with them, and we mentioned who they are particularly.
Okay.
So, we don't have any lease agreements now, so they may not do this, right?
Right. And what we envision is, if you approve this, then in a couple of meetings, maybe, or so, if you reach an agreement with a general contractor to build the building, and if you make those commitments where this project is going forward, which would be the next step, then we bring the lease agreements back to you at that time and provide those to you for your consideration. You guys have to approve all that yet. This is the logical first step, we needed the school and you to agree on how we would move forward. Once you do that, then we can hopefully do a construction agreement. And then, again, no need to do lease agreements until you have decided to move forward. And then somewhere along the line in there, in first of the year to March, is going to be your decisions to do your bonds. So, the leases that we've talked about, these possible leases with the chamber and the township, they're the last thing you'll hear about.
Okay, but this, our intent is to be good neighbors and to offer them the opportunity to have new space.
I think that's fair, don't you think?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
I think it's a good way to say it. Yes, that's our majesty.
Any other questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Cannon? Would somebody like to make a motion, please?
I move that we adopt the cost share agreement for the Civic Center at Eastern Gray as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the final reading of Ordinance 2024-41, County Road 571, Street Vacation. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, you guys will recall at your last meeting, you guys did a public hearing on this street vacation. I didn't notice, oh yes, Steve Brehab is here. Steve is the engineer representing Pasari, so if you guys have any questions, Steve is here and prepared to answer those. But as I explained to you guys at the last meeting, we really need to vacate a portion of County Road 571 East, and then there's two portions of Endot right of way next to it, that once we vacate that piece, then Endot will vacate those pieces, and then Pasari will actually plot a new street in the location that we actually want it, and where it needs to connect to the street light. So this is kind of just a step in the process to work towards getting that done. You guys, like I said, you guys held the public hearing at the last meeting, you did not have anyone show up and offer public comment, and so your final step in the process then is to approve or deny the street vacation.
And to give everybody an idea, this is where if you wanted to turn left, you'd go to the Washington Township Park, or if you wanted to turn right, is what we're talking about.
Exactly, yep, yep. The north side, across from Washington Township Park.
Yep. Any questions for Mr. Cannon or Mr. Brehab? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept final reading of Ordinance 2024-41, the County Road 571, Street Vacation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the final reading of Ordinance 2024-43, Adopting the 2025 Budget Appropriation. Mr. Cannon?
Everyone ready to walk all the way through the budget again? You guys want me to read all my budget changes?
Already read them.
I was gonna say, hopefully by now. I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have them. Otherwise, before you is the 2024, or 2025 budget, sorry, getting all excited about adopting the budget. The total town budget comes out to be, in all funds, right at about $30 million. The general fund is $9,150,000. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Mr. Holland?
I just want to know if you can confirm that in the general funds, that we have new employees coming out of that? Should we hire people?
We have two new police officers budgeted in the general fund.
And that's it?
That's it. New employees.
Okay. And we have any town employees other than police coming out of that budget, or are they coming out of other budgets?
In the general fund, the town manager's department is paid out of, the town council, the clerk treasurer.
But any new employees?
No, no, the only two new employees are the police department employees.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
Not a question, just a comment. As usual, this is, this can be a very complex and challenging process, and year over year, you've made it very seamless, and so thank you. Great, great job. I know this is not just you, it's to staff as well, but you're who, you're who reports to us, so thanking you, and you can pass on those thanks as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, kudos? Somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2024-43, adopting our 2025 budget appropriation as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the final reading of Ordinance 2024-44, Corrective Ordinance for Mission Foods Res zoning. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I... Sorry?
As I explained last time, your approval on Mission Foods included a commitment about a landscape buffer in which you and the planning commission wanted to allow the staff some flexibility about exactly how that was designed. And so, your ordinance didn't include some details about the final design. Now, commitments have been recorded, which have the exact language your staff wanted in the design details. So this change is to line your ordinance rezoning with that landscape provision. And so that's what this does, it's just, is a correction so that it shows a permanent record of what actually was approved. So it's just a way to circle back around. We don't always do this, but the landowner asked that we line those two things up, and we're happy to do so. So I work with Lynda on this.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the final reading of Ordinance 2024-44, the corrective ordinance for Mission Foods rezoning as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four. Next item is legal counsel report. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second of two opportunities for public comment. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. With nobody coming forward, then we'll close the public comment and move to council comment. Any council comments?
I forgot one very important person on that, and her department, Julie, and I know you're, I don't know if you're watching, but I'm sure she had a massive part, as you did. Kathy, thank you as well. I apologize for not including you earlier. That was it.
Anybody else? No, I echo Robert as well. It's a difficult thing. It's, you know, we're getting bigger and bigger, and the numbers are getting bigger and bigger, and, you know, we had, Jason and Bill were two newbies this year, and we needed some extra time to sit down and help them feel comfortable, and I think at the end of the day, our system's working. So, thank you, Ryan, and let everybody else know that. Council calendar?
Your next council meeting is October 24th at 7:00 PM, no work session, so you guys are off until 7:00. I know that Bill had already reported to me, he's not going to be at that meeting, so if there's anybody else who's unavailable, please let me know, just so we can make sure we have a quorum, I don't want to waste anybody's time. A little bit, I know you guys are used to getting your packets on Friday before, your packets actually won't come till the Monday before, so for those of you who are watching anxiously on a Friday afternoon, you're not going to get them till Monday, and I apologize, it just happens to be that Suzanne and I are both on vacation, so we won't be able to get them done until that Monday, the 21st. So apologies for that. You will probably still get the claims information from Julie on Friday, because she has to get that in advance to you guys at least five days, so you'll still get that from Julie on Friday, probably.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.